We are. Cool. All right, folks, this meeting is officially called to order. It is July 21st, 2020. It is 7:29 PM. This is the third Tuesday of July and our scheduled council meeting for the month. If everybody can please rise with me and pledge allegiance as best you can on camera anyway. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. And roll call, please, Angela.
Corey Scott. James Fee.
Here.
Randy Bennett.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Kyle Schenk.
Here.
All seven are present and for the record, folks, we did have an executive session that went from 6:45 to 7:30, where we discussed some legal matters. Mr. Truman?
Very good. Thank you very much. First up for council consideration, adoption of the council meeting minutes for the June 23rd, 2020 meeting.
Let me make a motion. Second.
I heard a motion from Mr. Fee, seconded by Mr. Heil, to adopt the council meeting minutes from June 23rd. Any additional questions or comments from council? Or council's cats? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Very good. Moving on, next on the agenda for council consideration, the adoption of Resolution 2020-21, which would execute an agreement with Plymouth Community Ambulance Association to serve as the primary municipal EMS provider. Members of council, we have, we have discussed it at several previous public meetings. Although it has been several months, this dates back to 2019. I'd like to give a bit of an overview and a history for the benefit of any of our virtual audience members, anybody, any folks who might be listening in on this meeting. Lafayette Ambulance Company was phased out in early 2019 as it was consumed by Upper Marion Township in an effort for Upper Marion Township to bring fire and ambulance services under the same municipal department. Bridgeport Borough has had or had been in a service agreement with Lafayette since 2006, when it changed over from being with Plymouth Ambulance. We were aware of the change. We knew that Upper Marion had taken over Lafayette. And subsequently, we were notified by Upper Marion Township in mid to late 2019 that they would continue to honor the Bridgeport Lafayette contract, which was set to expire March 31st of this year. However, both municipalities would need to enter into a new agreement thereafter. And Upper Marion Township at that time had indicated that the annual service fee would need to be increased in order to cover their operating costs. In February 2020, Bridgeport was provided with a financial analysis from Upper Marion Township that demonstrated Upper Marion Township need to increase service fees. The proposed annual cost that was presented came as a range, with the low end of that range being about $58,000 annually, the high end being somewhere in the low six figures. In comparison, we had historically given a small contribution donation to Lafayette, $500 many years, most years, $1,000 this last one or two years. At this time, Upper Marion Township also agreed to extend the expiration date of the Lafayette agreement to July 31st of 2020, but asked, the Bridgeport indicated whether they were going to stay with Upper Marion Township Ambulance and Fire or contract with another vendor by March 31st, 2020. On March 31st, Bridgeport notified Upper Marion that we wouldn't be entering a new agreement with Upper Marion citing financial reasons. We, while we all certainly, and this is no, this is no slight against Upper Marion Township, they provide a fine service, as did Lafayette. But Bridgeport Borough, we certainly understand the decision to absorb Lafayette Volunteer Ambulance Company involves a change in financial obligations and ideology on the part of Upper Marion. And certainly also the neighboring municipality such as Bridgeport that enjoys the benefit of Upper Marion Ambulance Service should be responsible for its representative share of the financial burden. However, we just frankly are unable to consider an annual cost of this magnitude for ambulance services at this time. And mind you, this was all prior to the onset of the COVID outbreak and subsequent stay-at-home orders and shutdown of the American, let alone the regional economy. Therefore, in the meantime, Bridgeport began discussions with Plymouth Ambulance Association, knowing there was a possibility that a different provider might be needed. Therefore, what I present to you, members of council, is a, not only the resolution that's going to memorialize the agreement, but the agreement in and of itself. This is a, it represents, I guess, a compromise on both sides, not that there was any dispute or anything of that nature, but compromise insofar as it's going to be a seven-year term. Excuse me, Plymouth, as a rule, generally enters into 15-year agreements with municipalities. Norristown and Plymouth just recently, within the last several months, entered into a 15-year agreement. Ours is going to be, at least this, this first contract is going to be a seven-year term. There are provisions to opt out if certain, certain benchmarks and thresholds are not and additionally Plymouth has, is willing to accept a contribution donation similar to that that we gave in our previous agreement to Lafayette, $1,000 annually. Along, again, along with the same ability that Lafayette had to conduct and solicit for memberships as a fundraising drive with Bridgeport residents, which is status quo irrespective of whether it would be Lafayette, Upper Marion, or Plymouth. As a rule, all ambulance companies, volunteer fire departments, what have you, perform fundraising campaigns. And just, just to provide a, an additional level of satisfaction and calm to the, to the residents of Bridgeport, we have performed a thorough review of EMS-related data, gathering data from the county CAD dispatch system. And we've determined there will be no reduction in response times or overall quality of service by making the change to from Upper Marion Ambulance over to Plymouth. People that might not necessarily be familiar, they hear Plymouth and they think, oh goodness, these folks are coming all the way from Plymouth Township when, when we have a crisis. They are Plymouth and Moniker only. Their main station is located directly across the DeCraub Street Bridge. Ambulance company right next to the Duff Company on Main Street in Norristown. And frankly, depending on traffic conditions or workload for either Upper Marion or Plymouth, if there are times when, in the last several years, that 911 or an ambulance is at fault and Lafayette and/or Upper Marion have not been available, Plymouth has already been responding in the borough. Furthermore, given, as I said, traffic conditions, there, there's no guarantee that Upper Marion is, would be faster than Plymouth or vice versa. As a matter of fact, looking at one of the more recent studies, and these come out in six-month blocks, the last, one of the last studies that I looked at was third or fourth quarter of 2019, the average response time for Upper Marion was 6.81 seconds. And the average response time to Bridgeport for the calls that Plymouth addressed was 6.1 seconds. So Plymouth's calls, while they were far, far fewer, were actually seven tenths of a second faster to respond on average. So with that, I would certainly entertain any questions that members of council may have. Otherwise, I would humbly request that council consider adoption of this resolution and subsequently the agreement.
Yeah, just, just want to reiterate, I'll, I'll just say a second or third time, Keith, I know people are going to have questions about this, that we, we did have data available, and you just said this, I'm just repeating it, I appreciate you putting it out there. We did have data available to look at. Upper Marion handled the majority of those ambulance calls at Bridgeport, but when they were otherwise occupied, Plymouth took a number of calls for us. So we were able to look at response data. And Plymouth was every bit as responsive as Upper Marion, if not better. So I just wanted to say it again for the record before we move further on with the discussion, because I know that's going to be a point from the public that they will ask about.
And, and I will say this, and I, it was not a firm commitment. Oh, I should say it's a firm commitment, but not one that can be tied down and included as, as a term of our agreement. However, in conversations that I've had with the chief of Plymouth Ambulance, he has confided in me that it is, it is his ultimate goal within the term of this seven-year agreement, that sooner than later, and obviously dependent upon fundraising abilities and the overall financial health of Plymouth, he would like to station a full-time, or a full EMS team, which is a paramedic, an EMT and a medic and a truck on a daily basis in Bridgeport Borough. That, whether that ultimately turns into an eight or 10 or 12-hour shift, obviously, we cannot say at this time. We don't have a deadline. I cannot hold, the borough cannot hold Plymouth to a deadline on this because it's, it's only a very recent and, and at the inception of the conversation. But we have, I have no reason to doubt or not believe the verbal commitment that they do want to provide as great a service as possible to the community. And ultimately, in the next several years, with any luck, we will see a, a daily full EMS team staffed in the borough for a substantial.
Yeah, I don't have any further questions. I think we have to do what's financially right. And as well as making sure that we have the right response from our EMTs or for the residents of Bridgeport, it seems like the right thing to do. But again, obviously, there's no, no issue with Upper Marion there. They just have to rejigger the way they do their business.
Certainly.
Great. So we are, I think we're looking for a motion to pass Resolution 2020-21?
Correct.
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion made by Ms. Nolan, seconded by Mr. Scott, to pass Resolution 2020-21, executing the agreement with Plymouth Community Ambulance. Any additional questions or comments from council on that? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And hey, Chief Brett, I'm, I think we're getting a little bit of, a little bit of audio feedback. Are you able to mute that line? I'm just digging it and it looks like it's Zoom's telling me it's, there we go. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you all. Next on the agenda for council consideration, a curb cut request, applicant being 129 West Sixth Street. Members of council, in your packets, you will find a memorandum from me, myself and the Traffic and Parking Subcommittee, dated July 16th, 2020, which contains a recommendation on this curb cut request. The memo reads as follows, "The Traffic and Parking Subcommittee, also known as the TPS, recently evaluated a curb cut request. Below is the recommendation. The TPS recommends that council approves this request. Upon review, it has been determined that this curb cut is being done in order to create a driveway at the rear of the lot. Additionally, this driveway will empty onto an alley, which is the prescribed method of retrofitting a driveway onto a property. Thank you for your attention in this matter." So with that, I would ask council to consider approving this curb cut request.
I'll make the motion approved.
I'll second that motion.
Question from Mr. Heil, seconded by Mr. Bennett, to approve the curb cut request at 129 West Sixth Street. Any additional questions or comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. And now moving forward to the police portion of the agenda for council consideration. Authorization to proceed with policy handbook update. And I believe the vendor goes by the acronym LEAS. And the amount would be $15,000. Members of council, I believe you have a memorandum in your packets from Chief Beretta outlining this request. And on that note, I will hand it over to Chief Beretta for further discussion.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for entertaining my request. As you know, on coming here, I thought the, of the great importance that, that dealing with accreditation, future accreditation would bring. A policy and procedure manual is of great importance. And my hope is that with the help of LEAS, that we can get there in the most reasonable period of time. It is the framework with which a police department is then hung. So it's a very important process. I've met some of these folks that are involved with LEAS. I think they'll do a superb job. They're from the region. And so I'm asking for your support on this resolution so that we can move forward and redo completely and comprehensively something that started in 1995 and is due for a refit.
And this, these monies were budgeted for 2020. So it's not a brand-new request, just as a, as a reminder, this was, this was budgeted and we discussed this at the end of last year when we ran through the budget process, I believe. Mr., is that right, Tony?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I know that we discussed this and I think it's a good thing. I have a concern about how we're on a spending freeze in general and also about a lot of laws that are coming on the books now. And we can debate, you know, our feelings about them. We don't know what the laws will be, but if we do this and spend the money, will the policies be different in six months? Could this end up being outdated? Given the pace, I mean, Pennsylvania just passed a couple of different laws in the state legislature. I don't know what's going on federally on this, if anything's going to pass. And not to, I mean, they could always pass new laws and, you know, we could wait forever, but it seems like there's a pace to get things done.
Yeah.
2020.
I can address that in short, Mr. Heil. Right now, in fact, it was one of the things that I actually put out training on is the, the Pennsylvania Police Reform Act that Governor Wolf just passed about a week ago. And it talks, that, that talks in part of mental health treatment for police officers. And the second component of that is the policy and procedure for hiring of police officers and to ensure that law enforcement will have the availability of all pertinent records on a police officer so that the best of decisions can be made for the, the newer agency that's about to hire. This process for a policy and procedure rewrite would take a little bit. This isn't going to be something that's going to be over in 30 days. This is going to be months' worth of labor. And during the course of this time, we'll be able to interact with them to make sure that any changes that need be, get changed. In fact, you know, after that, and, you know, future is that we'll have like updates like you do with either Solicitor or with other organizations where you need to ensure that we're up to date. And then we'll, we'll, we'll do that as well. So I don't foresee that work being done now is going to be lost work or lost revenue by, by initiating it now. I think actually it's perfect timing for it. Many times, we kick the can down the road on a project because we're unsure of what it's going to be like down the road a little bit, and it's a little bit easier. I can tell you with all shorty, again, going back two years, that this was one of the linchpins that I said it was a necessity, not a desire. And it is more so now in this, in these turbulent times where people question transparency, training, education and information.
Well, you know, as Keith knows, I was talking to him separately in finance meeting about worries about, you know, spending any money right now. But this could end up saving us in legal fees down the road possibly. And, you know, if it helps us with any insurance issues, et cetera. I feel like despite those reservations that I have based on our economic situation, not sure, I feel like it would be irresponsible of me to not support this right now, so.
Councilman, I agree with you on the first part of what you said. And I have a huge reservation about supporting, spending the money. Not necessarily the policy revision or the manual revision, though I have full faith and confidence that the officers in Bridgeport can continue to operate as they are now, firmly, fairly and consistently. And I think the last eight weeks have shown that they have a commitment to providing a, a platform for all kinds of voices, even groups that may have members that don't necessarily support the police full-time, you know, fully, or to see radical changes in a police department. But all that aside, when we're on a spending freeze, when we're when money's in question, not just in individual homes, but as a borough, as our budget, it's just not the time. I know it was budgeted last year, but that was way before anything. And if it was a hard-line, just 100% needed, it's going to hurt us. We gotta, gotta do it. It would have come up in January and not come up a month, you know, at the last meeting as in, as a reaction to the national environment. There's a better time to spend that money and there's a better time to save the money, which is estimated at 15,000, not guaranteed at 15,000. And I would like to see this personally moved into the future when we're more sure about how finance, put it like this, and I've always said this. Whatever time we can put an actual officer on an actual street doing actual police work, whatever amount of time that is, that $15,000 gets us, I'd rather have it on the street than in a boardroom creating a document that in five years, six years, it's just going to be dot, 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 dot. Oh yeah, back in 2020, we did that document. And if it was, nothing happened in the last six months and that money was budgeted, great. But there's, there's decisions to be made about what we're going to spend and what we're going to save. And unfortunately to me, this is going to fall victim to something we have to cut to save this money and look at it again next year, or unfortunately, maybe even in 2022.
I think it's a point well made, Randy. I, I assume you're coming from with it. I would just, the only, the only pushback I would have is I don't necessarily see the fact that we're doing this now in response to a national political environment. Although I do see, out of the time it looks that way, I think this is something, if we look at that book, if our policies are going back to the 80s and 90s, these, we're talking 20, 25 years out of date. It's got to get done. And now, and understanding that we're in a tough financial position now. Sure, but I, I think it's money well spent. Even, even given a tight spot, but that, that's not to say that your point's not without merit, Randy.
Yeah, I, I do think that the saving of the money is important, but I also know, just like insurance and other things, sometimes spending money, saving money down the road. And if it's money that Keith feels, and I know a month ago Keith was not comfortable spending this money. And now he's a bit more, not that he's tossing out dollars, but he, in my conversation in Finance Committee yesterday, he seemed more confident about spending this. And if Chief believes that this could help us with any legal things that come up, we know how quickly legal fees can add up in the borough. And if having this on the book helps us save money down the road as a result of that, then, you know, it may be worth the money to save us money in case something else happens. I think it's an insurance investment as much as anything else. Does that make sense, Chief?
It does. And if you guys go back to my leader action plan, when I was going through the process here in the summer of 2018, a review of policy and procedure was the, of, of prime importance. So, so again, when I say the framework of a police department hangs upon policy and procedure, when a lot of policy talks about, well, when you change your hard-line telephone line in policy and procedure, that's a little bit outmoded, dealing with social media and the viral nature of everything today. So with much respect to all parties, I saw this as a very large deficit that is of prime importance. Not something small, but something, again, that in consideration with how we train our personnel, with other challenges coming forward, it's going to be what investment did you make in, in policy, procedure and personnel training? And
If I could, if I could jump in there real quick. Obviously, from this, this is not my department and, and I only, only, I only speak on this from a, a financial standpoint. I think that logical arguments can be made to proceed with spending the money. And I think very logical arguments can be made to forego or forestall. I will say this much. Chief, in my, in my routine and daily conversations with him, Chief has been eager to do this for several months. However, per the Harrisburg thresholds, a purchase that falls within, I believe it's between $11,000 $11,100 and $23,000 requires at least three written or telephonic bids. Chief was easily able to secure one early on. And I, I pushed Chief to try to find those other two vendors who would be capable and willing to quote him. And just recently was, was, was able to find another vendor to provide two of those required three. So Chief has been interested and eager to move forward for a bit of time. However, due to bidding and quote thresholds, it has been, and, and obviously with, with what's taken place with COVID and throwing our normally, normal operations out. It has been a bit delayed.
All right then, do we have a, do we have a motion for that authorization?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We had a motion from Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Fee to move forward with the authorization for the policy handbook update with LEAS, $15,000 estimate there. Any additional questions or comments from council members? Hearing none. Then all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, and any opposed? Do not hear any opposed. That passes unanimously. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Excuse me. All right, thank you all. Next up for council consideration, under the category of finance or council consideration, sorry to be redundant, authorization to pay bills and salaries for the month of July.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Heard a motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Nolan. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 I'm opposed.
Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, very good. Next up for council consideration, a fee waiver request coming from St. Peter and Paul's Church. Sorry. In your packets, right after Chief Beretta's memo, you will find a letter from Father, Father Ron Popivcek from St. Peter and Paul's Church asking for a consideration of a waiver of fees for the roof permit that he had recently paid for, for, for a roof on the church. The, the fee in question totaled $300. I believe that might actually be $304.50 because every building permit comes with that $4.50 search four dollar and fifty cent search charge that the, um, the state's pound of flesh, so to speak. Um, but here in his letters, he's asking for relief of three hundred dollars. Irrespective of what the final dollar figure is, it is somewhere in the vicinity. Uh, it is, it is standard protocol, uh, members of council to consider a honoring a, a fee waiver for institutions, whether it's uh, whether it's a church, uh, a Knights of Columbus, uh, or other charitable, the Elks, other charitable organizations. Otherwise, uh, five oh one C three nonprofit when they, when they pull a permit. Uh, and this is, you know, small enough that, that I think that we could, uh, we could consider it if council has the inclination and desire.
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from uh, Mr. Bennett, seconded by Ms. Gondrum, for the fee waiver request from Saint Peter and Paul's. Any additional questions or comments from council? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that passes you unanimously. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Next up for council consideration, authorization to pay aerator tree service in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars for tree removal at Memorial, uh, Bridgeport Memorial Park, rather. Members of council, back on June third, we had that, um, that wicked windstorm that while it only lasted about seven or eight minutes, uh, did catastrophic damage to trees across the region. We experienced at uh, at the park, and I'll say at the park loosely, because it was at the very border of Memorial Park, the, the, the back slope of Memorial Park that heads down towards Flint Hill Road. And the townhouse developments back on Flint Hill Road, uh, right on the border of the park and the Holly or Heather Hill, um, He- Heather Hill Townhouse Complex, which located on Holly Drive in Upper Marion Township. We had two massive trees. Uh, the top half of what has to be a seventy or eighty foot tall elm tree came crashing down onto uh, these folks' back patio. And then we had a one hundred and ten foot tree um, uproot. And had it not been for another one hundred and ten foot tree standing in its way and propping it up. Would have gone through the roofs of a cluster of this, of this townhome complex. Uh, it was difficult to find a vendor who was even interested in taking the job or giving me a quote for it. Uh, we contacted not only Aerator, but uh, Davey Shiner, uh, Asplund, um, six or, six or seven different vendors. The names don't all come to mind right now, and only Aerator provided a quote uh, for the, uh, for the job. We did have another verbal quote, um, however, that vendor would, would not have been able to uh, get to, uh, get to the job for another uh, four weeks plus time. They were, they were that far scheduled out. And just with the precarious nature of that hundred and ten foot tree, just being held up by another tree. Um, we had another wicked rainstorm uh, about a week or so ago, and several limbs from that tree had, had subsequently, uh, we had to move forward. This was an emergency and um, we have already taken the tree down. So from an insurance and a liability standpoint, fortunately, all is well. Uh, but given the magnitude of this job and the fact that uh, it was very difficult to, to get machinery back there. Uh, they had to bring a crane in and literally work from the parking lot over the top of the townhouses to lift the tree and stabilize it, uh, a ninety or one hundred ton crane. That was a very expensive venture, so uh. By proxy or by way of authorizing this month's bills and salaries. You already did authorize this expenditure, but in the, in the name of transparency, I wanted to isolate and publicly identify this invoice so that uh, you know, council can uh, council can separate it out and prove it in and of itself.
So we're looking for a, a motion here to authorize to pay that bill, even though uh, technically we did, but in the interest of transparency. Sure.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Ms. Nolan, seconded by Mr. Scott, authorize the borough to pay aerator tree service for the removal of that tree. Uh, any additional questions from council?
Um, you know, are there any other issues that we should be aware of now that we've had this tree topple? Is there any remediation that we need to do, or just hope for the best?
Diane, insofar as other trees that might be.
Exactly, yeah.
And are we talking about strictly in uh, Bridgeport Memorial Park or just in the borough as a whole?
I would say in that area, since we already had the, the issue.
Uh, we already had a, a, a litany of trees fall during that storm. Well, I'll say that, uh, you know, not all of those trees should have necessarily fallen. The, the one that, that hundred and ten foot tall tree, it was not dead. It was, it was quite alive and vibrant. I, it was just a, a, a wicked abnormal storm, a wicked abnormal gusts of wind that, that took it down. Uh, I will say that, uh, I know that the park board uh, has already identified a roster of trees that are at risk and that need to be come down, and that they have a local contractor working on that. Um, I know that it is a, a, a slow but steady process and that there are still a handful of trees that still need to be addressed, as far as I'm aware. Perhaps Mr. Bennett could speak a little bit greater to that, but um, yeah, this, it's, it's easy, it's easy to identify a dead tree, as I'm sure, I'm stating the obvious there, that, that just takes a little bit of common sense, but some of these trees, we didn't really know had, were even at risk, and it was just an act of God, to, so to speak, in, in insurance lingo.
And it really isn't an area that people enter.
Out of sight, out of mind in that one, on that one, yeah.
The trees on that back slope, I don't know, I don't know how you would, I predict down there, we unfortunately, across the, the rest of the park. I, I, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know what the final bill is going to be for the park board, other than substantial, um, and we had just done some work in March, but um, we had six diseased trees, dead trees in the park. Uh, on the slope, the Grove Street Hill, and oddly enough, none of them came out during that windstorm. And about nine other trees that were healthy did come out. So we still have to deal with those six diseased trees, which we're doing um, based on, you know, vendor availability and based on we, we prioritize them based on, you know, just the, the situation that they're in. That doesn't mean there's, none of them are in a dangerous situation or could potentially cause any damage any more than any other tree. But there's, you know, some are closer to, to property lines and things like that. And so we prioritize the list and we're taking them down, but um, as Keith mentioned, every tree company is, is booked to capacity and most of them split their time between being tree guys and um, you know, landscaping, a landscaping firm, so they're getting pulled in all directions, but it's moving forward. Um, and I, I think that at least on the visible areas of the park, we've done a everything that's diseased or dead is identified at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
So we do have that motion on the floor. Any additional questions about the payment of that uh, for the tree removal? Hearing none, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Uh, and next for council consideration. Authorization of an inter-fund transfer between the sewer fund and the general fund. Uh, members of council, in the two thousand and twenty budget approval and adoption for development and adoption process, uh, as is generally a protocol, at least for the last four years. In terms of how we put the budget together, we budgeted a, a transfer of surplus funds from the sewer fund to the general fund. And this is done in an ongoing effort to continue to pay down uh, what is called a due to, due from, money owed by the sewer fund to the general fund. Um, for the general fund's many years of subsidizing the sewer fund, because the sewer fund was not financially salient enough to handle its annual operating expenses. The sewer fund for the last several years has been financially salient enough to handle its annual operating expenses. And then at the end of the year, depending on how uh, financially successful the uh, the, the year was, depending on how much surplus uh, was left in the sewer fund at the end of the year, that would predicate the amount of inter-fund transfer we could allocate to continue to pay down uh, that uh, that, that seven figure uh, debt that the sewer fund uh, owes the general. Further, uh, since the general fund is by and large in decent enough shape that it, it's not reliant upon, in normal years, reliant upon that transfer of sewer fund monies. We generally then transfer those monies directly to the capital fund in an effort to continuously replenish the capital fund to make sure that we have enough money in there in order to undertake our varying infrastructural and otherwise capital projects, whether that's improvements or repairs at the sewer plant, annual road paving, the recent, uh, the recent creation of the municipal parking lot, uh, the purchase such as, uh, that was just approved for the policy manual rewrite for the police department. Uh, other vehicle purchases, so on and so forth. Um, so as it stood in terms of what was adopted in the two thousand twenty budget. We were going to transfer three hundred thousand dollars from the sewer fund to the general fund. And then transfer two hundred and fifty thousand of that as replenishment to the capital fund. Leaving fifty thousand dollars in the general fund, uh, in an effort to, uh, to balance, at least on paper. Uh, the, uh, the, the general fund, uh, operating budget for two thousand and twenty. Uh, in light of the fallout from COVID nineteen and the anticipated revenue shortfalls, particularly in earned income tax. That Bridgeport, as well as every other municipality, uh, in this region, if not the entire country. Uh, should be expecting to experience beginning third quarter two thousand and twenty and extending at least into two thousand twenty-one, if not longer. Uh, I would recommend that we do the first half of that inter-fund transfer. In other words, transfer the three hundred thousand dollars from the sewer fund to the general fund. As we always do, or typically do. Uh, and then wait and see how bad the economic fallout is, how bad the, the drop in revenue ends up being for the borough and for the general fund until we and, and wait on that and have that provide the barometer as to how much we realistically can transfer and, and, and allocate over to the capital fund for replenishment. Uh, I will say this, we are, uh, we are going to be uh, forestalling several of the budgeted capital expenditures for this year. Uh, and we can go into that in, in greater detail on that at, at, at later meetings. Um, but the capital fund is in fine shape. We have at this date, I believe, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, just short of a million dollars in the capital fund. Um, we, we have money in there. It is, it is in very good health. Um, so if we do not ultimately transfer monies into the cap fund this year. Uh, it will not do any long, long lasting or substantial damage. Um, that three hundred thousand dollars, however, may very well wind up being uh, desperately needed by the general fund, uh, in order to uh, keep us from running a deficit in two thousand and twenty. That remains to be seen. Uh, hopefully, uh, that is, um, hopefully, the impact that we experience uh, in shortfall in revenues is nowhere near that substantial. Because not only does that mean that the borough is in a good, healthy financial shape, um, comparatively. It also means that our residents are in good or better, healthy financial shape and that uh, their, their, their job loss and their financial hardship uh, is not as, as bad as perhaps some of our neighbors or, or some of our other contemporaries throughout the country. So, um, what did I say in that, that lengthy verbose uh, statement? Uh, I would respectfully ask council to authorize and approve a transfer of three hundred thousand dollars from the sewer fund to the general fund.
I'll make a motion to do that.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hile, seconded by Ms. Nolan, to authorize the inter-fund transfer between the sewer fund and general fund as uh, just described by Mr. Truman. Any questions from council or comments on that matter?
Um, I'll just comment that we went over this in finance committee in detail, even more detail than Keith just did. Um, and it is well thought out. It's not a rash decision. It's, I, I think it's the right decision.
Thanks, Tony. Any, uh, any other comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all. That concludes the manager slash solicitor slash engineers report portion of tonight's proceedings. And with that, we can move forward to unfinished business. Are there any members of council or anybody present at this meeting that have uh, items of unfinished business? All right, seeing none, we can proceed to committee reports. Um, I will, uh, I will ask our representative committee chairs if they have any uh, committee reports in, uh, in just a moment, but allow me to begin by stating that uh, with great regret, um, it seems to be, uh, seems to be the, the, the beginning sentence for a lot of my, uh, my social media posts lately. Uh, with great regret, we have to announce the cancellation of the two thousand and twenty Bridgeport five K. Um, you know, it started off with the carnival, um, and much like the carnival. Uh, the commu- the committee, community events committee, uh, just can't envision a, a way to pull off an event of this nature that involves such close and relatively intimate uh, interaction with, uh, with other participants or patrons. Um, and achieve, you know, proper social distancing and other, uh, other financial safeguard, I mean, not financial. Uh, health safeguards that need to be, uh, implemented. So, um, you know, obviously, the Broad Street Run, as well as all other uh, community gatherings were just canceled in Philadelphia last week. Uh, you're, we're seeing run after run, five K after five K canceled, so unfortunately, it's things for us, but um, we're, we're certainly in good company. Everybody seems to be doing it at this point. You know, Corey is our, uh, our resident runner. Uh, our fastest man in Bridgeport and uh.
Second fastest.
Second fastest, pardon me.
I was looking forward very much to being the fastest council person, uh, in Bridgeport this year. Unfortunately, that's not going to be the case. Um, shoot for twenty twenty-one for that call.
But Corey, as, as a runner, uh, you, you and your friends are not even considering going out to races right now, right?
Oh no, most runs have either been canceled. I, I mean, I usually do four to six races in the fall. I'm not planning on doing any, uh, the ones that are going on this year seem to be kind of more on a wing and a prayer, rather than like, I don't know, doing what everyone should be doing. So I understand, you know, it's outside, um, but gathering all that, all those people in a place is just, uh, not really easy to do right now. is just, uh, not really easy to do right now. And to have any kind of successful run, um, successful 5K in terms of our measure of success, I think would be so hard to even just attract a, a large enough crowd.
Thanks, Corey. Um, so with, with that, again, I will say, you know, uh, we have every intention of coming back in 2021, uh, stronger and better than ever. We, uh, we're, we're grateful for our, our newfound partnership, newfound as of 2019 with the Montgomery County Hero Fund. We think that that can only help, uh, not only the Hero Fund, but, but drum up awareness and participation in future Bridgeport 5Ks. But, um, the 2020, uh, 5K, which was scheduled for Sunday, October 4th, uh, is officially canceled. So, uh, thank you. And with that, are there any other committee chairs that have reports, uh, to report back on this evening?
I would just like to briefly say that the sustainability committee did meet, um, last week. Gosh, was it last week? Time doesn't mean anything anymore. But we did have our first meeting since February. It was really great to get together and try to recruit, regroup and see what we can do this year, uh, since all of our plans for the year have changed. Sadly, I have to say that we have a opening on the committee because a wonderful member of our committee, Zach Parek, uh, did move out of state to pursue a graduate degree and further employment. And I, we miss him. He was a great part of the team. So if anyone is interested in joining the sustainability committee, please send a letter of interest. We will be happy to have you.
And we can get that, uh, we can get that out of our social media channels as well.
Yes, we can. And, uh, you email, email the letter of interest to me, uh, at ktruman@bridgeportborough.org. And I will reiterate that in a social media posting. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. Nolan. Uh, are there any other committee reports tonight? Okay, uh, seeing none, we can move to the mayor's report. Mayor Barbie, do you have anything for us this evening, sir?
I have nothing for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Barbie. Uh, moving forward to the chief report, uh, Chief Beretta.
Yes, sir. So good evening, everyone. Um, speaking first, uh, regarding emergency management, just from, uh, Department of Health, uh, there's been some changes, uh, with Governor's Wolf, uh, Governor Wolf's office that have impacted, uh, even all of us counties that are in the green. We're in the green. Some of those changes have addressed, uh, well, we have about 100,000 cases in Pennsylvania, about 6,999 fatalities. There have been 899,000 patients that tested negative, uh, to date. So all 67 counties have some, some inclusive issue with, with COVID-19. Uh, just some of the significant increases of COVID among our younger age groups are the 19 to 24 age group. Uh, there was alert, uh, sent to healthcare providers. Uh, the southeast specifically nearly 5% of cases in April, uh, to approximately 17% of cases so far in July are within that group. Uh, somewhat, what, one of the more recent concerns has been in nursing homes. Uh, there has been 18,520 resident cases of COVID-19 and 3,562 cases among employees, uh, for a total of 22,082 at 777 facilities. So, uh, the governor also modified the, uh, indoor dining from 50% capacity to 25% capacity, not modifying exterior, uh, exterior dining, but modifying that, uh, that if you're going to have a drink, you need to eat, it has to be with meals, not absent meals. That's the current COVID case. Uh, again, thanking all the people that have helped us with the masking, masking group. We might, uh, need to raise more masks. Masks are still, uh, a requirement, um, in public places. If it does, if we each do our part, a little bit here, a little bit there, keeping a little bit of myself to me and a little bit of yourself to you, um, we can be part of the solution in our state as opposed to other states. Um, and we may not know quite scientifically or otherwise to what extent that's going to have an impact. But I am proud of, uh, my fellow neighbors, friends, um, in Bridgeport and seeing how everyone's really participated. So it's great. Um, it's a rare occasion that, uh, you're in a store and someone walks in without a mask. So way to go Bridgeport on that. Um, as far as the regular, uh, chief stuff, uh, some of the issues that we've had some concerns were were fireworks. So, uh, most fireworks cannot be discharged, uh, in Bridgeport. Three years ago, Governor Wolf had relaxed or relaxed some standards for in-state fireworks and purchase of fireworks that usually went out of state. Um, in Bridgeport, um, you need, uh, ample space and there is not that ample space. Um, that's not close to a building, not close to a public street, et cetera. So I'm asking people to shelve your, your fireworks. Uh, we have made a couple citations prior to, um, the July 4th event. Remember just that there are some impacts on your neighbors, children, pets, et cetera. So we understand that people have been cooped up and, uh, it's, it's probably nationwide, certainly state, statewide and regional wide with regards to the excessive, uh, firework displays. Some issues or some events, I know with some closings that we were preparing for National Night Out, a Race for Peace event and, uh, the 150th anniversary on some scale. The Race for Peace event, uh, we, I've been working with, uh, Eider Howe and Race for Peace for, for five years now, trying to, uh, bring communities together with law enforcement. Um, and we'll continue to do that. We'll see if we're able to do this in the September with, uh, with restrictions that are, that are in place or maybe in place. I'd like to thank, uh, Wawa working with us for the, uh, Icy event from last weekend. Uh, so at least 80 Bridgeport residents went and got icies so much that, uh, they ran out of icies. So by Sunday, so a lot of people enjoyed it. Glad to hear it. It's hot. Hopefully cool people down. Training, uh, the police department, um, seeing, uh, everything that's going on around us. Uh, I instituted, uh, implied bias, uh, training as it reflects in public safety, um, and intolerance issues, um, along with, uh, counseling and mental health for law enforcement, as well as the, uh, an overview of the PA Police Reform Act signed by Governor Wolf. So that's, uh, ongoing. Uh, I'd like to, uh, just remind people about parking enforcement. The, the Bridgeport Police Department in conjunction with the Office of the Mayor and with all of our, all of our friends and family, understand what it's like to have people that have suffered job loss and degradation in their personal lives and professional lives. With regards to that, we cut back significantly enforcement. Obviously, vehicle code enforcement was a cutback. And we also looked at the impact, simple impact of parking enforcement and the meters in Bridgeport. So for four months, we did very little enforcement in that, and that was, uh, at, at my direction as well. And, uh, that's, uh, we're now moving forward with enforcing the vehicle code laws, crimes code, obviously, as well as the parking enforcement. Uh, we can have issues where people would have a difficult time in an alleyway where it's already parked or, or, or presented that, that you can't park there. So we're asking people to please pay attention to the signs. Don't overpark curbs and intersections that will let, lend to safety issues and be mindful of your meters. There is ample public parking on Ford Street, um, off of, uh, off of Mill Street, um, and the public parking lot and other locations, uh, that aren't, um, that are during the day. We still have the normal nighttime period of time after 5:00 PM where people can park, park overnight, uh, without payment. And that still will continue as will, uh, the, uh, the lunchtime, um, exception that will still continue. So please, uh, just pay attention to that. Uh, as people move forward, making sure that you, uh, can still get your vehicle inspected, um, and taking care of those kind of businesses would be appreciated. Body cam project, I know that I had come, um, before or had requested body cams for capital projects and it's expensive. That being said, uh, I started the body cam project, uh, just seeking donations from the public sector or private sector, uh, so that as to negate the, uh, the, the stress on the public sector. So, uh, in that we raised a thousand dollars already toward a, uh, police department project of body cams. Body cams bring transparency and, uh, that's what we hope to do in the, in the future. And also, um, I've had virtual meetings or telephonic meetings with our, members of our clergy and, uh, some leadership and locally, uh, and, uh, just asking to see how part, disparate parts of our community are, are acting, what needs there are. In response to that, I'd like to thank Mr. Lessneri at Depot Street Bar. What a great guy. I mean, for the last 12 weeks, one way or the other, the guy's been helping us with, uh, food needs. First it was, uh, pizzas and it's been fruit. So wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Neary. And thank you to all of the, uh, restaurants and private citizens that have helped us. Um, if you know of anybody that has some of these needs that I can help out with through the network, um, with mom's meals, I'm setting up listings for people that we can help on a more, a lot, longer basis. So please do. And lastly, if there's anyone with regards to, uh, focus groups or, or lecturer or speaking with regards to current events, uh, that, uh, would like to talk about, uh, talk about any of that, I'm always available. And, uh, and we'll look at focus meetings, um, both externally and possibly internally as we can hold these meetings safely, both inside or outside. So I'm at your beck and call for that. So please, uh, call me if you have any questions. Um, I'm glad to take the time to speak with you. And that's what I have this evening.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, moving on to new business, are there any members of council with, uh, new business this evening?
I'll, uh, just a quick comment. I'll just reiterate, uh, what the chief said. I think Tony may have as well. I've been around town in various businesses or just out on the streets and folks are taking, seem to be taking the, the masking, uh, the social distancing seriously in Bridgeport at least. And I know in our, in our region, we outperform the rest of the state and the state's doing pretty well. If you compare us to the rest of the country as well, so just folks, if you're listening, thank you, uh, for paying attention. Thank you for listening to guidance from the health department and, uh, please do keep it up. It's, uh, it's good for town. It's good for your neighbors. It's good for your family. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, President Schenk. Uh, seeing, uh, seeing no other new business, I wanted to take a moment to, uh, acknowledge publicly one of our, uh, staff members, um, on a, uh, on a milestone, a recent milestone that was reached. Uh, on last Friday, July 17th, our sewer department lead operator and foreman, Chris Conway, celebrated his 20-year anniversary, uh, as a, uh, a member of the Bridgeport family and an employee with Bridgeport Borough. Chris is, uh, Chris is a marvelous employee. Uh, he can always be counted on to, uh, to, to lead our wastewater treatment plant team. And, you know, he has, uh, he's, he's, certainly, there's certainly something to be said for, uh, for being able to, uh, tough it out in a town like Bridgeport for 20 years. So we're certainly appreciative of, uh, of his work. And, uh, and I just wanted to congratulate and, uh, and acknowledge his, uh, his accomplishment. So thank you, Chris, if, uh, if you're watching, which I'm sure you're not. And, uh, we'll see you tomorrow. Are there any other items of new business this evening? All right. Uh, seeing none, we can move forward to public comment. And on that note, uh, members of council, I did receive an inquiry from our, uh, our website, uh, web form email submission, which while it is technically not the, uh, the method, uh, and, and it was this, this message, uh, the request, the request was asked, was made to, uh, to read this into the record during the council meeting. While the requester didn't necessarily follow the, uh, the prescribed method of getting their, uh, their comment read into the, uh, the public meeting, um, seeing as we had no other public comments submitted, uh, we can certainly, I, I think, make an exception and, uh, and
What is that, Keith? Just before we move on to the comments, what is the method? If, uh, if we have to do this again, which there's a good chance we will, uh, just to remind everybody, if you'd like to submit a comment or question to be read into the record, uh, at our Zoom meeting, Keith, what is that?
And, and which, which was, you know, we posted, uh, on our legal notice on our website, in the Times Herald and on our Facebook page. Please email your question to info@bridgeportborough.org and email your question to that inbox or, or email address rather by 2:00 PM, uh, the day of the meeting. So today, July 21st, if, if you get that email in by 2:00 PM, uh, that, that day, it will be read into and, uh, and acknowledged at the, uh, at the public meeting during the public comment section. So thank you for your, for your compliance and your, uh, your, your working with the borough. Much appreciated. That being said, let's, uh, let's proceed. Um, if, if it pleases council. Uh, the, the resident is Mr. Mark Jones. Uh, his address is 360 Prospect Street. And his message reads as follows. It is a, a bullet pointed or numbered, a set of questions. Number one, are we able to get police body cameras? Number two, do we have a social media policy for the police and other borough employees? If not, can we create one? Number three, diversity training offered at Montgomery County Community College. Upper Marion utilizes, should be uniform. Number four, duty to intervene policy. Can it be added? Number five, can review of workforce diversity for police force be conducted? Police force has zero people of color. Review should end with a plan to address. And finally, number six, review of possible deterrent for speeding on Prospect Street from fourth to Union.
Thank you. So that, uh, so that comment would be in the record and just, um, briefly, so we don't get too into the weeds on the discussion points, um, just to comment, it looks like, uh, I know those, those issues are ones that we've already been speaking with our department about. And I know council has been speaking amongst ourselves as well as with the residents. So a lot of those issues with, uh, updates to our police policies and procedures, uh, police reforms, uh, they'll follow what we've been doing at the state level. And I think these specifically to, to Mr. Jones's comments here, um, a lot of these are already in the works. So that's, that's really good news for Bridgeport. I guess what I would ask, maybe after we get some time, Mr. Truman, uh, and Chief Beretta, just to get a little more of a detailed response, we can get that back to Mr. Jones. I'm sure he'd appreciate it, but, uh,
Would be happy.
Yeah, it, it's good to see these questions. Again, you know, if folks on council, if you have any comments regarding these, uh, we can, but it's, I'm proud to say a, a number of these things we're already working on or already on the books. So.
I would like to point out from being on council for a number of years now, I know that, um, even back with, uh, Mayor Praskowski was looking at trying to, um, recruit more diverse members to the police. He, I brought it up in a council meeting like five years ago and, you know, we can't hire someone that doesn't apply. And I, I just know that he had, he had tried to do things. I don't know all the details, but I know that is something that, um, the chief had brought up, I believe, in interviews. And as I've talked with him privately about before, um, no one, people are in favor of it. Um, we also have to be in a situation where we actually can hire more people and it's a tough situation at the moment. So, um, we take these seriously, um, but we also are taking the economics of the, the borough seriously at the same time. Those aren't mutually exclusive, but, you know, we have a small police force and and it would be great to have more diversity there, but, you know, we're not in a position to be hiring a lot of people at the moment either way.
Think a, uh, one thing as far as our department, again, I, I'm not an expert on our department, but, um, you know, a skill set that we might be lacking there would be, uh, Spanish speaking officer. You know, uh, we have a lot of folks in town that are, Spanish is their first language. And I'm sure as we look or as we expand, as we hire, whenever we are able to hire, uh, there's a skill set I would certainly look for, uh, resumes coming in. All that said, uh, yeah, go ahead, Chief. I'm sorry.
No, just a, just an agreement.
All right. Are there any other, uh, comments on that or, or Mr. Truman, do we have any further public comment?
We have no further public comments, President Schenk.
Thanks.
I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna hand it over to you.
Oh, no, I, I thought I heard somebody else beginning to speak.
Motion to adjourn, then?
Yeah, there we go. Okay.
We have a motion to adjourn for Mr. Heil, second by Mr. Scott. Thank you, folks. It's 8:40. Appreciate your time, and everybody listening, please stay safe. Please follow the guidelines from the Health Department, and we do hope to see your faces soon at Borough Hall as as soon as we safely can. Thanks, folks. Have a good night.
Thank you all. Take care.
Thank you.